Ooh, that was loud. The August 24th, 2017 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Reverend Ken Davis, pastor of Fellowship Bible Church. Ken is also an employee with the City of Longview's Park and Recreation Department. Please rise.
Let's bow for a word of prayer. Father God, we come to you tonight, Lord, knowing that you are sovereign and you are in control. Lord, I ask your blessings upon this meeting tonight, upon the mayor and the council. God, that you would give them good discernment in making decisions that would be glorifying to you. Lord, it's an honor to be able to just be able to talk to you, Lord, and lift up this prayer request to you. God, I ask you to guide every decision that they make tonight. And God, just thank you for loving us. God, I pray that you would just bless our soldiers around this world and their families that are at home. And God, just be with our government, both local and our nation. We praise you and we love you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight in employee recognition, we're going to recognize the Longview Library staff. In attendance from the Longview Public Library media specialists, we have Jesse Davis, Youth Services Department, Jenny Yankley, Kevin Pineda, Nanetta Dennis, Mackenzie Hunter, Chanome Maxwell Parish. The Longview Public Library experienced a record-breaking summer reading club. In total, 2,290 kids registered for the summer reading club, which nearly 400 more registrants than the previous year. The success of the reading club wouldn't be possible without the sponsorship of many local organizations like Buckner and the Knights of Pithias, the dedicated and hard-working youth service staff, and the help of 30 teen interns. Combined over the course of a six-week program, the teen interns volunteered a total of 859 hours. The library offered programs six days a week for families to attend. Programs range from performers from around Texas to story times and craft days. Throughout the six-week program, the library had 6,054 people attend its weekly events. The library's next big event that draws in just as many crowds as the summer reading club will be October 20th and 21st. The Haunted Library is in its fifth year scaring the citizens of Longview with close to 3,000 attendees between the two nights. This event is held by the Friends of Longview Public Library, which is a nonprofit that works to fund, raise, and pay for library programs. This year, the Friends are charging $1 for children and $2 for adults for entering into the Haunted Library. Tickets are on sale from September 11th to the night of the event. So, library staff, please come forward. Did y'all catch the magnitude of how many kids they touched in the summer reading program this year? When you are affecting these children and giving them a chance to read and learn, it has a lasting effect that there's no way to quantify. Because I've said it, I've told my kids a million times, reading is knowledge, knowledge is power. And so, you're giving these kids a chance to be powerful in their lives, whereas they might not have that chance otherwise. And so, you all have done such a great job, and I look forward to the Haunted Library. They scare me to death. I don't like haunted houses. It's just, yeah. But you all have done such a fabulous job with all the things that you do for our community. You've made our library really special again in a time when we really need that. So, I thank you all for just taking the time to care for these kids and put your heart and soul into it, because it shows every time. And I'll walk in that library a lot. I'm over there for a lot of things, shooting videos and having meetings and whatnot. And every time I'm over there, I see these smiling faces and I think, what a great time to be a kid in this library. So, I appreciate what y'all do, the services you provide. Y'all are awesome. Thank you so, so much. One more here for the library staff. While we're waiting, I would like to welcome Ms. Lori Allen. Lori is a professor at UT Tyler, and she is here with the editorial staff of the Talon Newspaper Group from UT Tyler. They came over to spend the day with the newspaper and have come to our council meeting tonight, so we appreciate you being here. Thanks for your attendance. Glad to have you all here. I hope you learned something. If you're with that group, stand up for us. Excellent. So glad to have you all tonight. Tonight in community recognition, I'm going to recognize a very special individual tonight. This individual is the general manager of JOTS, which is joining on the spots in case y'all don't know. He works with the youth at Grace Creek Cross United Methodist Church. He builds homes on the side, but more than anything else, he is the president of the Miracle League of East Texas, Chris Ducky. Come on forward, Chris. You have no idea where you're coming tonight, do you, Chris? I know. Nobody knows. It's just nice that they come. I say, can you please attend the meeting? And they just show up. It's amazing. I want to talk to you about Chris Ducky here. This is an amazing young man that has spent so much time helping the community in Longview in so many ways, and he doesn't like publicity, he doesn't like recognition, but he deserves every minute of what we're going to do tonight, because Chris is in charge of the Miracle Mud Run, Run It Like It's Hot. And I don't know how many of y'all attended this year, but I did, and it was phenomenal. But that's not the point. The point is, this whole event is about the kids and the Miracle League and the baseball field that they're building for the kids that will never have a chance to play baseball on a regular field. And so, this is something that's special for kids that will change their lives, and Chris has put his heart and soul into this. I mean, just day in and day out, raising money, raising funds, getting things done. I met Chris many years ago. Chris and my daughter Spencer, Spencer's here, Spencer. Come on up, Spencer. Come up here. Come up here. Spencer's also on the Miracle League board. I met Chris through my daughter Spencer. They've known each other for many, many years, and they worked together in the Miracle League. But Chris is that kind of guy that just makes you want to do whatever he asks you, can you do, because he does what he needs to do, no matter what, and that's what makes it so special. The Miracle League, the Run Like It's Hot Mud Run, it is just something that's special to behold for our community. And I thank the Miracle League, I thank AmBucks who had a huge part in this, all the people from Rotary that volunteered. This was a monstrous event, fun, 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 but I'll tell you, without board members, people like Chris Ducky, people like citizens of Longview that support this, we wouldn't have a Miracle League park, and we're going to have a Miracle League park, and I cannot wait for that to open, because I hope I'm there to see the first pitch thrown out, because this is going to change the lives of kids in Longview and all over East Texas. So, Chris Ducky, you're the man. Thank you, sir. We got a video, we got a picture to get up here. Thank you so much. There you go. He's the man. Once again, Chris Ducky, guys, this is a true hero in Longview. And these are his parents back here. Y'all, raise your hands. Donny, y'all raise your hands. This is the driving force behind this good young man right here, so they have a lot to be proud of. Thank you all. We are now at the citizen comment. I have one speaker card. Ms. Jenny Yankley.
Hello again. Distinguished council members and Mayor Mack, I am the Youth Services Supervisor at the Longview Public Library and would like to take a moment to mention a particular organization in the community that has generously supported the summer reading club endeavors. I would like to give special thanks to the Fraternal Order of the Knights of Pithias. They are a local group established here in Longview in 1881. They purchased and assembled 16 bicycles that we gave away to children at our summer reading club end party for two years in a row. The Knights of Pithias have been sponsoring a similar program with local schools called Read and Ride for many years with great success. Two years ago, we asked them to help us continue this good work through the summer through our summer reading club. We look forward to working with the Knights in the future as we partner together encouraging children to develop their reading skills, all the while continuing to expand our annual summer reading club to reach more children in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jenna. I have another speaker card. Would anyone else like to speak and fill out a card when we're done? Very well, thank you very much. We're at the presentation items. Presentation update on the first year of operation of Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center, Ms. Laura Hill.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. I've been asked to present a brief update on our first year of operation. As you may recall, we actually opened on July 1st of 2016, and we wanted to come forth and report on the fact that we've been somewhat busy. During that period, we took in 5,932 animals, which come in in a variety of situations, owner surrenders, strays, that actual citizens bring to us, certainly what we pick up through animal control, then you see the dogs and cats broken down, and then our miscellaneous feathered hoofed wildlife, so. This is the breakdown by jurisdiction. As you may recall, we do have contracts to take care of the animals in Gregg County, which includes the cities of Glade Water, White Oak, and Kilgore, along with the county, the unincorporated areas, and then certainly our own. Animals going out the door. We have the adoptions, the owners that came back. We have 85 rescue groups that help us get animals out further from our jurisdiction if we need them. Unfortunately, we do have to do euthanasia. We are very proud of the fact that our euthanization for space was only 348 animals, which equates to an 80.5 live release rate, or only 14.5 for euthanization for space. We do have to euthanize for medical reasons and then certainly behavioral. Our clinic has been very busy. Dr. Pryor is here, our veterinarian, with spays and neutering and miscellaneous surgeries. And we do have a very strong feral cat program, working with another nonprofit called Godos This is what I'm particularly proud of. I've worked for the city for a really long time, and in the first year of operation, our community's support has been outstanding. We have in-kind donations of stuff totaling $118,000. Not mentioned on this, excuse me, our monetary donations are currently at $73,000. And then our volunteers total 7,140 hours to date, and we're giving that a $10-an-hour value, over $70,000 in volunteerism. So, that is just phenomenal for something that's been opening year. These are some examples of some of the equipment. You did recognize Fep for Pets when they donated our digital x-ray machine. This is our portable anesthesia equipment, our doggy wash station. And then we are also proud of the fact that our community helped us step up to send supplies to Van when they had the tornadoes. So, I would be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any question for Ms. Hill?
Yes, sir.
What was the strangest animal that you took in? You said you had some that were feathered.
Well, I've been over there, and I've seen an owl. Then we had, was it a falcon?
We had some falcons.
Hawks. Certainly snakes. I walked in one day, there was bunny rabbits out in the floor. So, we have quite a lot of, and certainly we have livestock that gets out, so we have to take care of that. And I did want to mention, along with some of those groups, we've had some tremendous organizational support. Spring Hill High School came and helped us one day, Pine Tree High School cheerleaders, Austin Bank, Best Buy, they send groups of employees or students down for the day or to help us with whatever our needs may be, so we're very open to that. And then, we have a new trend, so those listening, we have children deciding to have their birthday parties and have people bring presents for the shelter. So, that's something else that's pretty phenomenal, that we're reaching our smaller citizens. So, we're very proud of the fact that the community is supporting us so extensively and continually, so. Yes, ma'am.
Comment. I just made hearing the staff. That 85.5% rate, that's great, given that we've only been in this, I hate to call it a business, but it is what it is when we deal with the budget, for like a little over a year, about two years. And just want to say thank you to the citizens and for your leadership in this endeavor. I know it's been hard, and I see Chris Kemper back there. We talk on a routine basis, because there are several stray animals all over, and people just call, you know? And at the same time, I realize that, you know, we're going to have to move forward trying to get someone else to assist Chris as well. So, I think that under your leadership and with what we're doing within the budget, I think we'll get there. And so, I just want to say thank you, Laura, for everything you all are doing.
Thank you very much. We all appreciate it, and it is a teamwork endeavor.
It's a big question mark, and people ask why, you know, why this, why now, why didn't you do this? Well, there's a need. And one thing I've learned, having my little mixed-up mutt, people love their pets. So, and I love him, even when he gets on my nerves, so, thank you again.
I do want to make one comment, if I could.
Please.
I just wanted to emphasize how far we've come and how fast we got there. When the Humane Society was running our shelter, we had upwards of a 70% euthanasia rate. And now, you just saw, it's less than 15% for healthy animals. I mean, that's amazing in a year. But I also would like to emphasize that we continue to have a community problem in that the shelter takes in 90-plus animals a day. You know, the shelter staff that they have are finding rescues or finding adoptive homes, and now we're spaying and neutering before they leave the shelter, but that's a lot of animals to take in in a day. That's something that our community still needs to work on, becoming responsible pet owners and helping make sure that all of our animals are spayed and neutered. So, I just wanted to comment on that. I'm very, very proud of our progress, and we have a lot of work to do in the community to make sure that we stop having such a high intake.
Yes, ma'am. We do want to work ourselves out of a job by getting every animal spayed and neutered, if at all possible, but that will take us a little bit of time, but we're determined to keep working at it.
Laura, one more thing. Where do your transfers go to? And are we paying for the transfers?
No.
Paying for them to be transferred?
No.
Where do they go to?
Some of them go like up to New England, Wyoming, sure, Connecticut, places like that. We have a lot of local rescues that come in and pull, and they stow animals in the area, but there are animals that we've had some go to Colorado. I think we've had some go to Oregon.
Laura, I really think it's neat that the schools send their kids out to help and integrate into that, which is, you know, just good community service. And it's also nice to see the kids, you know, participating in birthday parties. Question, do we do anything there as far as, and I know nothing about this, do we do like, offer like vet tech training or anything like that at the shelter where we can help people learn to?
Not yet. We've kind of explored some ideas of Dr. Pryor being a mentor. We have to get into that, and she's been busy learning how to do spays and neuters really fast, but we intend to do that with partnerships, hopefully with UT.
We did have one volunteer who was already a volunteer, and she wants to go through that program, and she came and spent some time with us, but it was a very informal.
Okay, we'll hope we will look into something like that in the future that, you know, may be a way to help the community and bring in some revenue as well for us, so.
Yes. And I do want to give a shout out to Sheriff Surliano for the trustees every Monday. They help us clean.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Hill. Anybody else have something to say?
No, I was just going to say, through our volunteer, to answer your question too, we did have a volunteer program this summer through Tatum High School, and they had three students that came down, and they had to complete 150 hours of volunteer hours to get into their vet tech program. So, we did have three that came down and did that this summer.
Fantastic. Hopefully we'll expand on that and continue to look for... Was that Jimmy?
Yeah.
Oh, lordy. Okay, thank you very, thank you very much, Ms. Hill. Public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, this is the last call for our Citizens Police Academy. We have just a few seats available for any citizen that's interested in learning more about their police department. The Citizens Police Academy will meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:15 to 8:15 p.m. For an application, please visit longviewtexas.gov/cpa. We're also running the same Citizens Police Academy in Spanish. That will start on September 11th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Revolutionized Lives at 1505 South Green Street, and anyone interested in that can contact Officer Gonzalez at 903-720-6656. We're also offering our free women's safety course that will run from September 18th through the 23rd from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Some of the topics that'll be covered will be women's safety, workplace violence, women's handgun safety, firearm simulator, and we'll also have a day at the range where they can actually do some shooting. And for more information, they can contact Officer Christie Bryan at 903-808-3388. I'd like to ask everybody to save the date for our National Night Out kickoff party. This is a big event to get our National Night Out parties registered and organized. That'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, September 5th at Maud Cobb, and we have a great event planned, and just asking anybody that's planning on having a party to come out that night and visit with us and register your parties. And you can get more information at longviewtexas.gov/NNO. Also, I think I may have talked about this back last year, but we're starting to see some credit card skimmers show up again here in town. I know they've had a big problem in Tyler and Smith County. We located one here in Longview and just want to provide some measures that an individual can take on how to detect these skimmers before they use an ATM or a gas pump where you have to insert a debit card or a credit card. We just ask everybody to be mindful of their surroundings. They can gently tug on the reader prior to installing their credit card to ensure that it's firmly attached, because a lot of these devices just slide right over the top of it. Cover the keypad with your other hand when entering your PIN number, and more importantly is to watch your bank statements, or if you have online banking, to check that regularly for any charges to your credit card that may have been made without the individual making that. So, we're going to ask the public to keep an eye open for that and help us locate these skimmers and get them off these machines before they cause too much financial hardship. Also, on September 25th, this is our annual 2017 Explorer Open House. This is going to be open to our youth ages 11 to 21. We'd like to invite any of our youth, along with our parents, that are interested in our exploring program, to come, and we have an open house, and we talk about our exploring program and some of the things that they will learn in the exploring program, and that'll be held at the police department on September 25th. I know this weekend with Hurricane Harvey coming in, and I know Chief Steelman's going to talk a little bit about the weather event and what we could face, but we could be facing some inclement weather over the next couple of days, and I'd like to just throw this reminder out there. We could be facing high winds and some rain, significant rainfall. If the traffic signals are out, to please remember to treat the intersection as a four-way stop. And also with the rain portion of that, if we see flooded areas, we ask you not to drive in those areas and observe all warning signs that may be put up. I know we have these events, but we continually have people that drive through the flooded areas, and it causes some concern. And also with that, if we have downed power lines, to stay clear and to notify the police or the fire, other location, and we'll come out and secure the area. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Steelman.
Mayor, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update you on some things going on in the fire department. As Chief Bishop mentioned, Hurricane Harvey has certainly had our attention for the last two to three days. If you're paying attention to the news, it's continuing to build. It did make category one status this afternoon. They're anticipating right now that it's potentially going to be a category three hurricane when it makes landfall sometime Friday night into Saturday. I think, if I recall right, the last category three hurricane that we experienced was Ike back in 2007, eight, whenever that was. And we did experience some ramifications from that, even though you look at the area that's potentially going to be impacted with this event, is kind of in a triangle area zone between Corpus, San Antonio, and Houston. Even though that's seven hours or so away, we can still feel the effects of that up here in northeast Texas. So, we're preparing for that. We're monitoring the situation. Every day, we're participating on anywhere from three to five regional and statewide conference calls. We've actually began already deploying some of our local resources to help out. That's one of the great things that makes me happy about being an employee of the City of Longview is we're stakeholders in the state of Texas. And we have sent personnel as they left out. We had seven guys leave out about 5:00 o'clock this morning. Six of them went to Victoria to operate two rescue boat squads, and the other one is a water rescue manager, and he went to Galveston to manage resources. So, those guys will be down there for the duration. They'll have to ride the storm out, and then they'll respond accordingly to any flooding that takes place after the fact. At 5:00 o'clock this afternoon, we deployed an additional two people to go to San Antonio to help out in their emergency operations center. So, they'll provide staffing 24/7 until they see this event through. San Antonio's kind of the hub, and that's where a lot of the resources are rallying to see what happens with this event. And we're preparing, if the event that they call after the storm has passed because of damage to infrastructure and communication systems, they put our command bus on standby, and if it deploys, it will deploy with four additional people to go downrange and reestablish connectivity for these emergency crews that are working to serve the citizens of Texas. I had the privilege and the honor this past Tuesday of officially promoting nine people in the fire department. I've said before, this is one of the most exciting things that the fire chief gets to do, is to see the members in your department who are upwardly mobile. These men, in all this case, these are all men, are the future of the fire department, and to see that type of growth and their willingness to take on new and higher levels of responsibility is very encouraging to me. So, out of this group, we promoted three of them to fire driver engineer, two of them to lieutenant, one of them to captain, one of them to battalion chief, and two of them to section chief. So, pretty well, we had something hit at all parts of our rank structure in the fire department. So, congratulations to them and good luck in their endeavors as they take on higher levels of responsibility. Code red, I told you I'm going to keep talking about this one. Our numbers are slowly increasing. We're going up, I think, probably 50 to 60 people every time that I address you. So, we're up to 38,101 of our residents that are participating with our emergency notification process, and I'm proud of the fact that that number's continuing to grow. Heat-related, I've kept this one in here, even though we haven't really had much of a summer, we haven't had very many just extremely hot days, but we still are experiencing one call since we last met. So, people are doing good, and I'll couple that with the fact that our temperatures have been cool, and they're certainly cooler now because of this weather system that's heating us. So, continue to do what you're doing. I don't think we're out of the woods yet summers. We still have a little bit of summer in front of us. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Steelman? Thank you, chief. Appreciate you. Now, the consent agenda, any items council like pulled off for separate discussion?
Don't need to pull it off, but I have some questions on item F. Ms.
Don't need to pull it off, but I have some questions on item F, if Ms. Self would come up. Has to do with building demolition contract. What's our budget, proposed budget for building demolition next year?
Next year is 180,000.
And it was 150 this year. About how many structures will the 180 do?
That's 30 to 40 and possibly even more than 40, depending on the size and the type of construction.
I, I saw, we're, we're doing a secondary vendor tonight and I saw that the provision was made in the initial bid for a secondary vendor.
Yes.
Why do we, why do we need a secondary vendor?
That is just, the, the contract is a one-year contract renewable for five years. So with the, with the, being a five-year essentially program and with the emphasis in the conferencing plan to really ramp up the program and to demolish, demolish more buildings, we felt like in the event that our one contractor could not, if we had an imminent hazard and he could not demo that in a timely manner, then we would have basically a backup plan, a secondary vendor.
I, I noticed that the second low bidder was, wasn't a qualified contractor for insurance purposes. What concerns me is the, the secondary vendor that we're gonna use, their cost is over two and a half times the primary vendor's cost. So, we're gonna, we're gonna concentrate on having the primary vendor do as much as they can.
Oh absolutely. Absolutely, yes. Well, we will, we will always go to our primary contractor first.
And we're, we're convinced that the two contractors we're gonna use are the, the lowest and best qualified bidders.
As through our bidding, bidding process, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question or a comment just for clarification on that same issue. We've had issues before, and, and just to clarify, where we've needed a secondary person in place and we didn't have one.
Right.
Because the vendor wasn't able to pull through. So I think that's a lot of why we're moving in this direction too, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
And I just wanna make sure that people understand that because I know that we had some structures that could not be demolished by the, the vendor that we had. So it's, I think you guys are doing a great job in giving us the opportunity to provide a secondary vendor. That way, we will have someone that can do the job.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you.
And this is the first time we've, we've provided for a secondary.
That's great.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions on consent agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing now to discuss the proposed tax rate. We'll have Angela Walker.
The state statute requires that two public hearings be held on the proposed tax rate. The proposed tax rate is 12.23 cents for debt service, 38.76 cents for operations and maintenance, totaling 50.99 cents for, cents per hundred dollar evaluation. The second public hearing date will be held August 31st at 300 West Cotton in the City Hall Council Chambers.
This does require a public hearing which is now open. Any questions on this item? Public hearing is now closed.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Action item, Consider Resolution Accepting Donation of $39,700 From Paws. Ms. Ishihara.
Thank you. Just in the spirit of giving a recap for the year, I wanted to highlight our nonprofit, which is Longview Paws, that is supporting the shelter. Today, we will be making a donation of almost $40,000 to build some outdoor kennels that will help get the animals outdoors some more, as well as help facilitate the cleaning of the indoor kennels. And so I asked some members of our group to come and we'll present, Mayor, if you'll come up with us, we'll present you a check. And just also, I wanted to note that was not included on the prior slides, Paws has also donated an additional about $30,000 to the shelter over its year of operation. So about $70,000 that we've raised from community supporters through our events like Strut Your Mutt or Home for the Holidays, the Doghouse Competition. So our community's been really actively involved with the shelter and we appreciate that. So we're able to do that tonight because of their support. And if you are with Paws, I see, I saw Bill and I saw Renee and I see Keisha, come on up and I want Dr. Pryor and Chris and Laura and Jackie to come up too. These are some of our very active members that have helped to raise funds for the shelter. So we just wanted to take a minute tonight and thank everybody for all of their work and then also present our very cute check to the city of Longview for...
It was covered to me. You gotta pay something for doing this job.
You give it to high school students. This check is to cover the outdoor kennels and we're very proud to help support our shelter in that way. So we'll smile. All right. Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you to you all because this is a big donation that helps the, and, and the city of Longview realize this, every donation that comes in to the animal shelter is one less dollar we have to fund out of our city budget, which is a huge thing for us. And so we appreciate Paws and all the community volunteers, as Laura was saying earlier, that have come in, in, in help of our community to help our animal shelter. So this is a big deal and I appreciate y'all's effort and the, the time you put into it because we do need it and we really appreciate what y'all do. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
We fail to remember that, we talk about a lot of volunteers and donation things, every time something happens for any endeavor in the city of Longview, that's a dollar that we don't have to account for in our city budget. And you know, if you added all those up over the year, it's probably a pretty significant number. So we have a very giving community and I appreciate all the, the people in our community that give to their, you know, everybody has their own cause and that's, that's what makes it, everybody drives different color cars, you know? That's okay. As long as you keep giving to the community, we, we appreciate every dollar and every, every hour you spend volunteering and helping our community in any way that you do. So thank you all very much. We appreciate it. Out of the community interest, Mr. Moore.
We need a motion.
Oh, 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 Mr. Finley, thank you. I didn't know you were here tonight. We need a motion, please.
Moved to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thanks, Mr. Finley. I knew you were here for a reason. Now, out of the community interest, Mr. Moore.
One last reminder for a workshop down at our Development Services building this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. to learn how to go about getting a historical marker, what you need to do research-wise. Last one was quite well attended and hopefully this one will be too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Nadie.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of pats on the back first for my co-council, Cassia Williams. Great job on your town hall. It's well attended and those in attendance were well informed. Secondly, to Ms. Ishihara and the Junior League, outstanding job on the Poverty Conference. It was like one of the best that you guys have put on, so great job.
Thank you, Ms. Nadie. Ms. Williams.
Good evening. First of all, shout out to Citizens on Patrol. I laugh because not only are they always here, thank you, y'all wave your hands.
Love it.
Come on. They're always here, but they were also at the town hall meeting that I hosted, co-hosted with Shan Bauer, LISD trustee, on Tuesday night. So thank you and thank you for your service and we need more volunteers, don't we, chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Monday, I, I'm always confused about what day of the week it is, but I think this was Monday. We had an Amtrak special event in Marshall, Texas. Many of you know, you read all the time about what we're working on with Amtrak. We are working on an I-20 corridor train that will open up some of the tracks that have not been opened basically and will provide access all across the United States. So if you'll notice there, it's Christina Anderson, who has worked tirelessly, see and Judge Anderson, our own Griff Hubbard, myself, and the two young ladies are two interns. This is the second year that Amtrak has sponsored two Amtrak, two interns to ride the train cross-country, they get on their bicycles, they go through communities, they meet the people, they love the small towns. Even though they look like they know each other and they're friends, they did not know each other. So that was a great experience. And then there's our, our Joy Smith, senior, senior communications, everything for Amtrak. So it was a really great event. That's myself, picture with the, the new mayor of Marshall, Texas. He was in attendance as well and it was just really a good event. Next, the town hall meeting. Thank you to everyone that came out for the town hall meeting. I know several of my fellow colleagues on the council were there. Thank you for being there, Steve, Kristen, Nona. I mean, it was a really great event and gave people an opportunity to really learn about both LISD and the city and we joked, Ms. Nadie and myself, the other day, today. You know, it's funny how everything always comes back to the city of Longview, huh, Mayor?
Tell me about it.
No matter what you do, so, but it was really good and very well attended, so thank you all for that. This Sunday, my church, St. Mark's CME, the oldest black church in Longview, we will be celebrating 150 years in Longview. I'm a sixth generation member of St. Mark's CME and, you know, just wanna invite the community to come out and participate with us. We'll have a lot of different dignitaries there, from State Rep. Jay Dean to Bill Stout to Dr. Mack, our mayor, and just wanna encourage the community to come out and participate with us. This is such a great celebration and I am so proud of the heritage of St. Mark. 4:00 p.m., we will have Metropolitan CME Church out of Houston, Texas there and everybody is invited. And, and one last thing, Sean Hara, wave your hand. Sean, you make me look like a rock star. And I need to say that because the new graphics with the whole, you know, Sean did my PowerPoint and I was up there making jokes like I always do, going, "These new graphics are killing me," you know? But Sean, thank you and thank you for the time and the effort and the energy of being our public spokesperson. So thank you for that and thank you for all the time you put into helping me and Shan have a successful town hall. Thank you.
Ms. Ishihara.
I have a town hall meeting coming up, Tuesday, September 12th. I would love for you to join me and it's at Winterfield United Methodist Church there on Tryon Road and it'll start at 6:00 p.m. Bring any issues or concerns that you have and I would love for you to join me there. The next one that I have is Shine a Light on Human Trafficking, a Flash Glow 5K or One Mile Run Walk. That's happening September 23rd at McWharter Park. Festivities include face painting, vendors, food trucks, bounce house, and music by DJ Juice, which will begin at 5:00 p.m. You can visit longviewtexas.gov/FlashGlow to register or call 237-1019 for more information. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pirtle.
Nothing.
Mr. Willard.
Yes, Mayor, we have a coworker at the city of Longview, Elaine Reynolds, who has been off work for a bit and we just, I know she's watching tonight and wanna give her a shout out and tell her we're thinking about her and praying for her and...
We love you, Elaine.
Can't wait for you to get back to work.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Willard. Elaine, get well soon. We want to see you back. Well, I have a few things. New forever friends and co-pilots mentors are needed for the new school year. New mentor training, September 15th, 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Call 903-237-1019 to register. Union Diversity Committee monthly meetings are due to the holidays. The next meeting will be September 11th, noon to 1:00 p.m. Longview Public Library at the Moshe, Moshe Sli Room? Moshe L Room? Yeah, I don't know. The committee, that room, yeah, you'll know where there's a sign that says Union Diversity Meeting with an arrow. Okay, go that direction. Community be strictly on the first Monday of each month. City of Longview office will be closed Monday, September 4th in observance of the Labor Day holiday. Sanitation will have normal trash and recycling collection on Monday, the 4th. Remember what I say? Those guys never sleep. They never get rest, never take a day off. They're just the most awesome people in the world. We just really, really appreciate our sanitation division. Veterans Plaza Teak Park, please help honor our veterans. Is he to donate? Donate, go to www.vetplaza.org. We need donations. We have a lot to be proud of with our Veterans Park and Teak Park. Upcoming events, there are several upcoming events throughout the Longview community. Back-to-school bike rally, Saturday, August 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Safety City, across the street from City Hall. $3 per child, bring your bike or ride ours through Safety City. Bike comes will be given out while supplies last. Lone Star Speedway will have Texas Wing Modified Races this Saturday, August 26th, starting at 8:00 p.m. You know, those are, those are pretty cool cars. If you like that kinda thing, go out to Texas Motor Speedway, I mean Lone Star Speedway, that's a, that's gonna be a lot of fun. United Way Family Fun Day is Saturday, September 9th, from 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. at Thomas Falls Event Center in Diana. Contact the Greater Longview United Way for more information. Downtown Live starts Friday, September 8th, the Cody Wayne Band, 5 to 8 p.m. at Heritage Plaza. I cannot wait for Downtown Live to start again. It is such a fun time to be out in Longview and the weather should be good. This is gonna be a great time, so I'm looking forward to Downtown Live starting again. Make plans to attend. We'll see you out there. For more information on any of these events, check out our calendar or visit longviewtexas.com to learn more. We had a pretty busy week this week with things going on in the city. We had the Longview ISD Montessori Grand Opening where I was there with council people, Steve and Cassia. You know, that is a amazing structure and it's an amazing educational opportunity for students that take advantage of that. And what's even more important, it's a wonderful addition to South Longview and it's a wonderful spur to help start growth and development and economic diversity in that area. And so we look for that to be a really important piece of our education puzzle and our city puzzle. So thank you to Longview ISD for going out on a limb. And my understanding is this is the largest Montessori campus in the United States of America. And so, right here in Longview, Texas. So that's pretty amazing. So I am really excited about that and I think LISD will, we will see the fruits of that labor. And, and remember this, this is what's gonna give kids a chance to excel where they would not have had that chance had this program not been in place. So thank you for going out on a limb. It's really appreciated. As I mentioned earlier, we did the Mud Run, Run Like It's Hot Mud Run. It was so much fun, but once again, like I said, it benefits the Miracle League and people out there, you know, I had a blast. You get to just get in the mud and it's, it's what you're supposed to be doing, you know? You don't have to worry about, okay, look right there. Okay, I want y'all to look at this. You see those little beams that go across there? Okay, the first time I went through there, I'm stepping over the beams like, I'm thinking it's like a hurdle or something, you know? And I get out of the little mud pit and the guy goes, "You're supposed to go underneath them." And I go, "There was no way, how do I know?" So I go back around, dog gone up swam underneath those things. I had mud in my ears, my nose, everything, but it was so much fun. And there's a, oh, that's, I got the, one of the stations where, where you carry your partner. And so I got to Carrie Spencer, they didn't get a picture of her carrying me because that couldn't happen. Too much weight discrepancy. But they had so many obstacles to, to get to go through and it was so much fun to be out there and seeing everybody participate. And you know what? So what if you fell into, guess what? You got a little bit more muddy. Once you're muddy, you're muddy. It's like when it rains, once you're wet, it's wet. So get in there and just, just do it. It was so encouraging to see all age groups out there participate in this event. And I, I enjoyed every, I went through every obstacle, I didn't pass up on a single one of them and I got as muddy as I could get. And it was a blast. So thanks to that groups, all the groups that put that on, the participation was wonderful and I know they raised a lot of money for the Miracle League. So thank you for, for doing that and for being a part of our community like that. What's next? We have our Go Giver Gala, remember? 7:00 p.m., January the 6th, MOD Cobb. This is where we're going to raise money as a city for our homeless initiative. So I'm encouraging you to buy a ticket, to get sponsors, to join this event because this is something that we're gonna do for our community. And I know we have a lot of great fundraisers in this community that go to a lot of great organizations, but this is one that hits really close to home because it is our home and we want to provide that for others. So I encourage you to get involved and to be part of the Go Giver Gala in January. I'm looking forward to that event. Survey time. Okay, let me give you a little bit of information before I read the survey. This is about tax increment reinvestment zones, or TIRS, or TIPS. These are set up in a city to allow redistribution of taxes to help promote infrastructure and development in a region, to get people to, give them incentives to build. And so my question to the community this week was, would you support this type of reinvestment zone in the downtown area, the I-20 area? Because we just finished this downtown smaller area plan, the I-20 plan, and understand, once again, we have another wonderful document that tells about a lot of things we would like to see happen, but all of it requires money that the city does not have. And what it requires is private investors to come in and do these projects to benefit the community and benefit themselves. They have to make money off of it. They're not just going to throw money at us because we're here. They have to make money. So this is a tool that we can use to help entice people to come and build in certain areas. Let me give you an example. Okay, let's just say out on I-20, where Leadco and the City of Longview own that, where we demolished the hotel, okay? Let's just say, and I'm just using these round figures so y'all can understand, because I'm not good at this, but let's say we made $100,000 a year in tax off that property. I have no idea what we make, but I'm just going to say we make $100,000. Let's say someone comes in and builds something on that property, and now we make $600,000 in tax off that property. If we had this reinvestment zone, we get to keep our $100,000 that we've always got, but we can use that extra $500,000 to try to entice people to come and develop in that area. So it doesn't cost us anything, but it allows us to use monies to get more development. Does that make sense? I think it's a great idea if we could do it without costing the city any money, which is our whole goal. So I asked the question, guess what? Y'all are smarter than I am. 66% said yes, I mean, no, 68%, whatever, a big yes, which is what I wanted to hear. It's a good, it's a good idea. We'll see if it goes forward. We'll just kind of explore this option and see what we can do, but I think it might be something that would be very beneficial for our community if we could make that happen. Second thing, what is your favorite fall pastime? This kind of surprised me. What'd you say?[1728.71]